I'm gonna call the meeting to order. This is a work session, so there'll be no comments. We're gonna work first on the private cemetery burial plot, the suggested ordinance, and then if we desire and have the time, we might take up solar. Please announce your presence, starting with you, Chris.
Chris Abernathy.
Dick Lake.
Officer Whitman.
Luke Kennedy.
Bob Helles.
Andrew Schmidt.
Robert Bolling.
We have a floor. There are no minutes of meeting. That would be a break. Public meeting, right? I think we've been through this before. Does anyone have a conflict of interest? Well, I think there's time, then, that we discuss the private cemetery burial plot ordinance as submitted. There were some changes. I did this. There were some changes because the law changed, and I cited the new laws. I don't know. Did you send them copies of those statutes?
Statutes. Did I?
Uh-huh.
You didn't receive them. Would you like to see them?
I made those available if anybody'd like to see them. I'm comfortable. They are the applicable statutes.
That one, this, the House of 2700. Yes, it's out.
That's it? Yeah.
We understand.
Okay.
Would you like me to put it up on this room? If you guys have any questions about it?
Really isn't a major change from the old other ordinance, except for broadening the class of people that can be buried in the cemetery. It does expand that to allow others in immediate family. And the last part, for other private reasons, leaves it pretty well wide open.
So who determines other private reasons?
I assume the landlord. This, what those ordinance would essentially do is allow any landlord to make burial space available to anyone that he or she saw.
Just for everyone's benefit, the particular subsection that Mr. Lake has imposed, I'm just gonna read the first section, and it speaks to that point. Bodies may be buried, bodies plural, may be buried in a private cemetery, burial plot determined by the owner of the private cemetery slash burial plot, and may be related by marriage, adoption, friendship, or other private reasons. Just like stated, so there should be no purchase or thing required for allowed to be buried in private cemetery slash burial plot. And some other conditions. I'm just trying to tell them.
Sure.
It's difficult to do that in just a few minutes in a regular meeting.
Yes. That's why I thought it would be helpful to have something to start with.
I don't know what else you, what else would a person put in?
I'm trying to be.
I mean, that pretty much covers everything. How would they?
Okay, then it's next week, a publication and then public hearing?
Yeah.
Is that what it'll be next?
Yeah. So I missed the deadline for the regular March or February meeting. So if we wanted to do it in February, it would be the next week.
Okay.
Or you could wait till March to hear it at the regular meeting, depending on what you guys wanted to do.
What's the board?
Also depending on how many work sessions you're wanting to do. So keep that in mind.
I was, this can only be established on a regular, not yet, not my workshop.
Right.
Are there any, are there any applications that they make to your office?
No.
For that cemetery's?
Not yet. Nothing.
I have a thought, just that it's a march meeting, do a lot of work. Very, this, I think we're gonna have enough work sessions and extra meetings, but maybe that's an actual?
Do you know any of the judicial action on that? You can just do that.
Yeah.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, there won't be any, any official action in this meeting at all.
Okay. Well, then, I suggest we move on, thinking about solar. I've read everything that's been submitted, but I haven't had the chance to compare it with the proposed ordinance. And I'd like a little more time myself to put together the ordinance as submitted to us by the county commission and the suggestions, so we can look at them together. I think that's, personally, I think that's the best way to approach it. That's how I try to approach things. I just didn't have time to get that done. I'm sorry. I just didn't have time. So if anybody wants to discuss solar, I'm more than willing to stay and discuss it, but I haven't got my own.
More sessions, then. You guys want to schedule a number of them? I've put some of the dates that the county council will be available. You just wanna take those into consideration.
My, one, I have one concern, comment on requesting that the county council be at our work sessions, because we have to pay him to come, and if we don't have anything for him, that's a waste.
I don't think we need it.
I would say we compile a list of questions, if we have them, and then Ted will need to work it out and attend, so that we're not paying him just to sit here for nothing.
I was county council all the time, I was county attorney, so I'm somewhat familiar with that. I have known reason to. I think that's a great idea. So when are our next, when can we next have a work session?
Well, the regular meeting would be on the 13th of February, so you could have it at that time.
Okay. I think, yeah, I think I could get something together by now. I did my best.
Yeah, on the 13th, you could, you could conduct some business, like approving minutes from the previous meeting, if zoning change.
Yeah.
And then go to work session.
Okay. Have work done?
Have you received many of the solar input forms?
Yes.
We didn't get?
We got the ones that were, that were received prior to the 13th, but I'm sure you have more.
I do have some more.
Oh, do you?
Yeah.
Oh, please get those too.
Yeah, the next, by the next one, yeah.
Which I figured you were waiting on, closer to time.
And sticking with my 10-day beforehand submitting.
I don't feel that it's your responsibility to do all of it. I mean, it's our responsibility to go through those, what? When we get those, we do our homework on those.
And I'm really doing it for myself. That's the way I'm, that's the way I've always approached things, and old habits die hard.
I appreciate that, but I don't feel that it's your responsibility to do all of that.
Thank you. I don't know about always, well, I think it's important for this one, this is a, this is a major consideration.
The one thing that I noticed, that when we're normally amending regulations, that we have it formatted like it will actually fit into our zoning regulations, this is formatted as a resolution. So do you want it formatted like it would just go right into those regulations if they get adopted? Or do you wanna keep it in this format? Does it make sense what I'm saying?
Well, that's how the county commissioners submitted it.
But it doesn't mean that that's how we have to format it, when you guys are talking about amending regulations.
Okay. Because this body is not about resolutions. That's what county commissioners do.
So essentially, what it would be is all of this from each year. I think it would start right here, the Article 30. Okay, you can go down and have it formatted like the rest of the zoning regs are formatted.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Please, yeah. Please do that.
And, and also on Article 30, if you wouldn't want to keep all of this in Article 30, or do you want an addendum or something? Because Article 30, in our rights right now, it's just one page. So this would add another 30 pages, which would affect the rest of the zoning regulation page numberings, which means a good portion of your book is gonna be renumbered, and table contents will be redone and all that, so. Or do you like this format, where it's all just right there? Article 30.
What's your recommendation?
I kinda feel like having an addendum.
Okay.
Works better.
All right.
I don't know if you guys can help.
You don't have to change everything.
Right. Change the entire, rest of the formatting of the, which it's not a big deal, it's just a page numbering thing, so.
I don't think, I think it's important is that if you do the addendum, county does the addendum, let everything be, you know, with that, but not have to refer, here's, here's part of it, and we go several pages, skip several pages, and then have another block and these all to be, get us for easy, easy.
Yeah. You guys wanna go that round?
Yes.
I just have one comment on this. It is, it's my understanding, anybody can crack me down, that adoption of this draft resolution is not an approval of solar. Right, then comes people with special use or, or whatever, I saw how it was taken.
That's right.
Well, another general thing that I had is in here is talking about the special use permit. To me, it's more of a conditional use permit. Because all of our special uses are, you know, it fits in line with that zoning district. And yeah, you may have some stipulations on a special use permit, but to me, a conditional use permit is more restrictive. It's got more conditions on it. And it's conditioned that that use is there, and if something is broken out of that condition, then it's, you know, a bigger deal than not.
It's a good idea.
Or you not wanna mess with conditional use, keep it simple.
I think, I think that's a better idea myself.
To differentiate between the two.
Yeah, because I didn't think that the, the perfect, all the special use doesn't fit in the specification.
Because there are a lot of conditions.
With that, the conditional use, there are certain due processes that are followed after a zoning change. Does the conditional use permit still follow those? I think, does that remove some of those processes? In as far as the?
I think there are, there's more processes for conditional uses. More things have to be presented to the commissioners or the planning commission.
Versus the zoning change?
Versus just a zoning change. Or just a special use.
Is there anything on this that we can work through? I don't know if we can work on some of that. That we can work through without? The first couple pages, I don't think, really had any effect on the, on the commentary that we received. And do we need to spend the time that we're here and start reading through it, and see if we have discrepancies, or just wait? I mean, I'm just throwing it out there, here, and how much I believe we need to discover.
I would say there's several ways that if anybody could proceed, if you have a bit of time, maybe starting tonight, basically go through each page. But if we, if we do it that way, I would hope that the planning board will be willing to go back, and if we're able to talk about page one tonight, and then someone, you know, receive feedback from the public, or one of us has an idea, okay, has some additional information. And once we've reached page five tonight, and if we'll come back to that, and we're able to come back to the evidence closed, without feedback to those earlier pages.
Yeah, we're taking.
Well, we couldn't do that. A public meeting would have to have the entire ordinance available to be discussed.
Oh, I'm sure, by the time we get to page 35, there's gonna be something on page two.
Maybe. Just wanted to allow for that.
I don't disagree.
So if we do change it to the conditional use permit, you basically have to go through and change it everywhere in here, right?
Yeah, it's gonna have to just switch a bit.
Do we want, like, is that, do you wanna update that? Have, like, we have an important next work session with the updated, is that what you're gonna do? Just so we're all getting off what it's actually gonna be and?
Okay, I'm assuming the Board of County Commissioners has not made any further proposed changes to the proposed regulations since the 12/26/24/27 was promoted to this.
Does there have, have you been any additional?
The Board of County Commissioners has not made any further recommendations, changes. I know they've moved out of that.
Not that I have been given. So.
As then, I guess probably everyone here knows, there's an lawsuit filed by some man, against various federal agencies and county commissioners regarding the solar project. How much is worth? Probably be in Peach, Peach Baker tomorrow. Are you, you're aware, I'm sure.
It's one of those you hear from the grapevine.
Hey, pardon?
I said, it's one of those you hear from the grapevine.
There've been some lawsuits filed recently, but they didn't involve solar.
Yeah, there was one regarding solar, was one in the interim today.
Well, there was one regarding solar, where a employee was, or a member of this board was terminated, because the ordinance was changed from when, when they have solar. That lawsuit was just on. But that still wouldn't affect us.
My question was whether anything we do has to be, those lawsuits have to be resolved before we make, I suggest, any recommendations to the county commission?
No.
But yes, there was a lawsuit filed, Mr. Hall, and a couple of other people, materials people can review, get every. I kind of got the topic, but.
My understanding, the work is going through and writing regulations that any solar company would have to follow.
That's correct.
In order to apply for these permits.
Yeah.
So none of that.
I don't think that's a matter to bring before the board. I don't think that's a matter that needs to be before the board.
I don't know. I just have any effect, it can be resolved before we make our recommendations to the county commission or not.
They have a challenge, our right to make that, make that recommendation.
No, the county commission was not mentioned ever, depending on the case.
And I don't know if that would stop us either. For an independent body, working on a particular ordinance. I suppose if they really thought they wanted to stop this body, they'd have to find an injunction. And then the court would decide whether or not we have the ability to go forward or not.
So gentlemen, something that we happen to consider, and this is partly because of can they, the, the public comment forums are required to be provided in order for this party, have time to consider them, ask any, county employees to ask any questions, or any counsel, if they can ask. But I don't know if we can, well, this, this one we don't know. I'm wondering if we wanna go ahead tonight and set up some additional work sessions, besides just the one on the second Thursday of March, just to allow those time periods to already be somewhat preset, at least for a little ways out, and maybe set, maybe set one more work session.
I guess you go ahead here.
After the March one, you can set a second one, and also counsel.
February.
Yeah. That way they're, people have more knowledge in advance, if that'd be in time.
I might have more characteristics, better, so.
27th? 27th of February?
20th of February. Right. You're suggesting 27th?
I'm suggesting 27th. Yeah. That's right. Can we all make the 27th?
And I'll get you a calendar, email.
See, February 13th is set up, is at 7:00 p.m. I mean, it's the same 7:00 p.m. with spam. I guess it's the time, time of day, 7:00, 7:00 p.m. on the 13th, with spam.
No, they, they're, yeah, they do.
That's all, that's all we want, because, so. If you have, if you really think you do have twice a day on 27th, maybe that one.
At 6?
No, 6 is a bit of a time to work, but.
Anybody uncomfortable with the 27th and 6th? Can I watch you schedule that?
Want me to go in March? Want me to go in March?
Yeah.
We just wanna do another work session, a regular meeting, and then you can do one.
That one will probably be the funeral.
Cemetery.
After the funeral. So the cemetery burial plot. So I don't know, if you guys can set up a work session after that. There's also very likely the potential of another zoning change or something before then too, so if you do a work session after that, it could be a busy night. Just be that annoying.
Twenty-seventh, then?
Yeah, the potential on a regular meeting, and I would see it, but it'd be a form, like, by the...
And may I have a problem with the March twenty-seventh cert?
See, how do we get along with those?
Can you say April, is it going April, or just wait?
I'd say wait. The rate we're going, it's going to be...
Too late, too long, you know, we've got, we have a term. What is the commission expecting, something from us regarding solar?
They shouldn't hurry us, they took their time. Yeah. I think, I think they'd like it sooner than they got past. I think we'll just go by, they'll get it when we're ready.
I don't, I don't think they're willing, they're probably not willing to wait as long as, they won't give us as much time as they took, let me say that way.
They don't set our schedule, we do.
That's what's good.
And they'll get it when we're comfortable.
I agree with you, Mr. Chairman.
And all we have to tell them.
Do you want to go over these?
Are you wanting to?
I'd like to go through some of them, just to start out. If nothing else, to get people where we're at, so that we can know how to change, I mean. I assume we've all read them.
I've got a little sheet here that I don't think was put into this resolution format, but it would be helpful probably in the actual addendum.
I'd put it in the picture editor, my bad.
There was also a spreadsheet that Lee started and Todd took over that has all the various counties with what their setbacks are, and so, you know, it's a quick glance at what other counties are putting. I, I started a spreadsheet on that, started it today, so it's, it's still pretty rough, and I don't have all the counties in there yet. I'll try and find that, what you guys are working on as well.
In my opinion, paragraph one, Commission findings, I mean, according to the comprehensive plan, what's written for this county, we're, you have to stretch pretty hard to survive the place for solar in the comprehensive plan. Got a rising favor in primary soil, preservation of non-arian, it depends on that.
There is a map in the comprehensive plan that has the waterways in it, which would be important to preference, that brings everything that would be, be upper areas or setbacks or... To me, those are sensitive waterway areas. Now, in the sensitive habitat areas too, there's a map in there on sensitive habitat areas. Maybe found a type A. Just says, can you do thirty-one dash two for the comprehensive plan, or I think you did, should be thirty-one and thirty-two.
Board two, board two. I have a concern, preservation of primatic soils, impact on cultural, historical, or archaeological features. This, the western edge of Jackson County is the eastern edge of Flint Hills. And I see a need to protect the native ranchland of the park and Flint Hills. And then again, the western edge of Jackson County is the eastern edge of the Flint Hills region in Kansas. So this proposed site is in Flint Hills region, and it is, my opinion, that should, that's culturally sensitive ranchland. And deserves protection.
Is any of that original?
Some of it would be virgin native.
Is it?
Some of it has, is improved. Improved grassland, by the way, it's been torn up, any of the farms, or reverted back to grass, but...
Because there was a place right on the south end, can't remember the name of the owner, and I know it was native. And they put something through it. She tried to get him to change, she even offered the paint, to have it moved north, and they wouldn't do it with the right length. It's native. That's the only one I knew was true.
There's, there's a, I don't know the total percentage, because I haven't seen each property that's even included, and that's not where we're at yet, to my opinion, on this. This is a, you know, a broad overall, because the next one could be in eastern Jackson County.
Sure.
But it is my opinion that we cannot replace virgin native ranchland, and we shouldn't care about it.
So can we get a map of ground, see which land is and isn't?
But I think we'll get that when it comes to the zoning, the, the conditional use permit. This is a broad...
Your statement just...
Yeah, this, I mean, this is going to have to be a broad, general term, because if we said, well, it can't happen over there, then they could turn around and say, well, you didn't say it couldn't happen over here. So this has to be a broad term for Jackson County, that what we will or will not allow to be built. Then, once this is resolved, then they could come forward and apply that conditional use to these standards. And then we could say, does that fall into this category, or does it not? That's the way I see it.
So you would want, in seeing, preservation of native?
Yeah.
In seeing?
It kind of falls into both of them. I feel that the Flint Hills is cultural and historical, but it's also preservation of primatic soils. Now, primatic soils could be described as bottom farmland, or a common productive, or that type of thing. So, I mean, I don't know where it needs to go, I'm just opening this up for discussion, that this is one of the things that is high on my priority list, because that's my logic.
Maybe a list of the areas. What's this area, certain waterways.
Well, and I don't, I mean, I don't know that Jackson County is necessarily delineated as part of the Flint Hills. I'm just saying, in our comprehensive plan, we describe that we want to protect the property.
I guess I, the problem I have is, and I, I understand what you're saying, but how can you tell landlord what he can, what he can't do with his own land? To me, bought it. I mean, that's, that's the only, that's the biggest problem I have with the whole thing. How can you tell somebody they can't do something with their land that they bought and paid for, and now they decided, I mean, if they wanted to come out and build worlds of fun out of my place, I probably wouldn't want it, but if they condemned it and decided to put it in, what am I going to do? But, I mean, or if I wanted to have it in, and everybody else didn't want to, I don't know. I mean, that's, that's the problem I have, is, you know, I worked hard to get my ground, and whatever I want to do with it, I'd be able to do with it. So I don't know, I, I understand what you're saying.
I don't, and I don't disagree with that, that's where I struggle, is private property rights. However, Jackson County is zoning, and we do have a comprehensive plan, and if we have to determine whether private property rights outweigh the benefits of the public or my first choice. And I'm just saying what I...
I understand.
What my, my...
I know. But I agree with you too.
There's plenty more I've got in here, but that's where it's based on, you know, is, is...
I understand, I understand.
Yeah, I'm in a tough spot, trying to decide private property rights versus... And that's the first sentence, season violence, private property rights, community rights.
We're just making the correction here, that there were two Ys, don't really say.
Do you have some suggestive language you prefer?
No, I think it's in there.
Okay.
I think that it's in there, I'm just saying that that's what I, that's how I'm interpreting it.
Okay.
Because you can't, you can't specifically list the native grassland, and that's part of the county, when it doesn't affect the eastern side or the northern side. So it's, I think it falls into the preservation of primatic soil and the impact on cultural and historical factors, that I'm saying, I feel native grassland is part of that. So I think it's already, it's already, the verbiage is already there, it's just how we're interpreting it. And I'm just letting you know where I'm at, that's all.